Good evening and welcome to City Council Meeting for September 15th, 2020. We want to remind Victoria residents that they can watch City Council Meetings live on Southern Link Channel 15 or 115 on our city website at www.victoriatx.gov/vtv15, or on the city's Facebook page. Although we have resumed in-person meetings, the risk of spreading and contracting COVID-19 is still a reality. Seating in the council chambers is limited to allow for social distancing, and there are many residents who may be in our high-risk population. For these reasons, we will also continue allowing citizens' participation through videoconferencing. For those who wish to access the videoconferencing during citizens' communication, visit www.zoom.com. From your web browser, select "Join a Meeting" located at the top of your browser and input Again, 444-573-113 for the meeting ID. Select "Join," following by "Open Zoom," and then "Join with Computer Audio." Click on the icon labeled "Participants" to access the option to raise hand at the bottom of the screen. Once you click "Raise Hand," our moderator will announce you by your username you've selected, and that will be your cue to begin speaking to council. If you wish to participate in person, please submit a comment card to city staff, who will then bring them up to me. I will call each name individually when it is your time to speak. Comments will be limited to five minutes in duration and will be received by audio only. There will not be an opportunity to provide any presentation or visual materials either in person or via teleconference. Please remember to silence any cell phones, televisions, or other background noise so that we can clearly hear your comments. It is generally the practice of City Council not to respond to comments made during this time, but city staff will be available to follow up as necessary. At this time, I will ask City Secretary April Hilbridge to call the roll.
Councilman Delagarza?
Present.
Councilman Bucknight?
Present.
Councilwoman Scott?
Present.
Councilman Young?
Present.
Councilman Loughran?
Present.
And Mayor McCoy?
Present.
I believe we're just missing Mayor Protim Solis.
Yes. We do have a quorum, so with that, I will now open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As always, we want to welcome citizens here that are either with us via teleconference or in person tonight. Are there any announcements or reminders? I would like to announce that the 2020 Census Self-Response Deadline has been moved back to September 30th, 2020. Victoria residents can respond online at 2020census.gov by phone or by mail. Again, you have until September 30th to respond. For more information, visit www.victoriaaccounts.com. Mr. Garza, do you have any announcements?
No additional announcements tonight.
Are there any public or employee recognition tonight?
Yes, sir, we do have one public recognition, and April will spearhead that item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff would like to recognize Jill Trevino. Ms. Trevino served on the Planning Commission from 2016 to 2020. This city appreciates her service and willingness to serve her community and presents her with this plaque in appreciation of the time and service that she devoted to our community.
And then you're welcome to say a few words on the microphone as well.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone on City Council, as well as the Development Services staff. During my time on the Planning Commission, I can without a doubt say that it has been the most rewarding service I've provided in the community, and I really appreciated all of the leadership and guidance that Development Services, particularly Julie, provided. So, thank you all very much for the plaque and for the honor to serve the community.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, moving on, are there any items from council?
We pull item D6.
We will pull item D6. I would like to make an announcement, too, that of something that's not on the agenda tonight, I will not be renewing my local disaster declaration tonight. I think everything is in pretty good stead, and I hope that I don't have to make another one for a very, very long time. So, that will expire tonight at midnight.
Mayor, if I may, it was going to be our intention, and I apologize for not mentioning it sooner, but it's our intention to pull item D6 from the agenda. We did receive several questions from some of you over the last few days, and so we would appreciate the additional time to be able to answer those questions. And so, if it's okay with you, Councilmember Bucknight, we'll simply just pull that item.
Okay.
And I can get with you after the fact.
Okay.
So, if we are not renewing the disaster declaration, I just want to perhaps put in a plug that that doesn't mean we're out of the woods, and I applaud our citizens for continuing to be responsible and acting responsibly and staying safe. And it's kind of like, okay, now we're going to try it with the training wheels off, but, you know, that doesn't mean that we're out of the woods. So, please, everybody, continue to do the diligent things you've been doing. Thank you.
And I echo those sentiments, too, Councilwoman. All right, we will move on to citizens' communication. As a reminder, citizens' communication may done either in person or through videoconference. We would encourage anyone who has any recent exposure to COVID-19 or those that may be in a high-risk population group to make use of the televideoconference option. If you wish to speak in person, please turn in your comment cards to city staff if you have not already done so. And are there any comment cards? I would also ask you to, if you wish to speak through videoconference, please use the "Raise Hand" button now. And Mr. Foot, do you have any citizens wishing to speak through videoconference?
Yes, Mayor, we have a Jay Urbano who wishes to speak.
Mr. Urbano, did you say?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. Jay Urbano.
Urbano, okay.
Is he allowed to speak?
Can you put him on, please?
Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Yes.
We hear you now.
Hello?
Okay, I'm just hoping it works, because yesterday it wasn't working so well. Okay, my name is Justin Urbano, and I was just, I wanted to talk about my request for being on the Parks Commission, and basically, I love sports, I love Victoria, Texas, and I've grown up, you know, in using the facilities very, I guess, very often. And I have a passion to serve the community, and I think it'd be a great fit for me. So, I had turned in the application and wrote down the answers to the questions, and I just wanted to come and speak today and let y'all know I was interested in why.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, are there any further comments online? I would ask that anybody, we do have a public hearing coming up. If anyone wants to speak to that matter, please wait until that time. So, seeing no one stepping to the mic here and seeing no one else online, I will now move on to items with public hearings. Mr. Gooch?
Mayor, item C1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code to increase rates for residential yard waste and residential brush and bulky collection.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are y'all doing this evening?
Well, thank you.
It's kind of nice to see y'all all in person again, instead of in my computer screen from my office. Just want to touch base quickly. Council, remember, we signed a new contract with Gardenville.
That's a good echo.
Ready? Okay. Back on August 18th of 2020, that, as I talked about that night when I did that presentation, it's going to cause us to have a rate in our tipping fees that were charged anytime we dump brush and bulky. And so, what we're doing tonight is asking council to approve the rate increase that I talked about that night. So, on your brush and bulky rate, currently, you're paying $1.85. It'll be a 13-cent increase, which will go to $1.98. That's per month, per home. Yard waste is currently $1.97. That will get a 12-cent rate increase, which will go to $2.09 per home, per month. So, the total's 25 cents. These two rates were created in 2009 and have not been adjusted since. So, I thought it's important to put that out there so that our citizens and council is aware that we're doing everything we can to keep those rates as low as possible by doing everything we can to be as productive as possible as we do our jobs. And I'll answer any questions.
If you have no questions, I will open a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to adopt this agenda item.
Second. An motion and a second to adopt this item. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Take us to the consent agenda, please.
Mayor, there are six items remaining on the consent agenda tonight. They will be approved by a single vote. The first is adoption of the minutes of the City Council Meeting from September 1st, 2020. Second is amending a city code to add a retention schedule for Victoria Fire Department's First Responders Body Warm Camera videos. Third is amendments to the Development Services Fee Schedule. Fourth, amends Chapter 24 to update and add fees administered by the Victoria Fire Department. The fifth is awarding a bid for an annual supply contract for bulk fuel to New Distributing Company Incorporated in the amount of $829,127.30. And finally, is an amendment to City Code, Section 24-13, Police Department Service Fees, adding a VTR 68A inspection fee of $40 per inspection.
Thank you.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second. An motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Mayor, item E1? Item E1 is a resolution selecting Alliance Transportation Group Incorporated of Austin, Texas, as the most qualified respondent, and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for the updated Thoroughfare Master Plan in the amount of $100,000 and declaring an effective date.
Good evening. So, tonight, we're asking for approval of a contract to perform the City of Victoria's Thoroughfare Master Plan. A Thoroughfare Master Plan establishes a community's transportation policy direction and provides a long-term vision of the major street network necessary to meet future nobility needs for our community. The Thoroughfare Master Plan is to guide development and implementation of a balanced transportation infrastructure system. Its also purposes to accommodate growth and development of the community by providing detailed assessments and recommendations of our existing and future transportation plans, programs, policies, and infrastructure. And then, the final document shall include recommended updates to our regulations so that we can then implement what is recommended out of the plan. Our Thoroughfare Master Plan is supposed to be jointly funded by the NPO in an amount of $70,000, and $30,000 will come from general fund monies that were programmed in this fiscal year for a total project cost of $100,000. The timeline is about a nine-month process, and we are looking for adoption in June of So, the plan will be consistent with the 2045 MTP, which is our Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is the regional transportation plan that the NPO produces and adopts, and our other current transportation documents, such as our driveway ordinance, subdivision ordinance, or will provide the policy recommendations for changes to those documents. It will, again, guide the subdivision development guidelines. It will also include public involvement in coordination with the city and the NPO. And then, it will include those recommendations that I've mentioned a few times, which are transportation policies and codes for the city to include corridor preservation and access management policies, the functional classification of roadways, which is our classification of collector streets versus arterials versus local streets, and will produce an updated Thoroughfare Master Plan map and looking at our entire roadway network, and then just all best practices and policies as it relates to transportation. And the final plan will deliver the actual plan document, which hasn't been updated since 1998, and then a new or revised actual Thoroughfare Master Plan map, which we have updated through 2018. So, Alliance Transportation Group is on the Zoom call. We have Jim Harvey, who is the project manager. We actually have had a previous relationship with HGG. They did perform our update to our Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and so hopefully, we'll be building upon what we learned in that plan and have a new updated Thoroughfare Master Plan. Jim's available to...
He's available. Just kidding, so. I'm leaving.
Okay, Jim, if you're here, we can, I think you're eligible to say hi.
Sure. Thank you very much. We really appreciate this opportunity to continue our working relationship with the City of Victoria. We've been working with you over the years periodically for about 15 to 17 years now, most recently, as we said, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. I hope that we can bring to you in this Thoroughfare Plan some of the tools and insights to begin to implement the infrastructure to carry out and empower that vision that was established in the Metropolitan Plan. So, we're excited to be back helping your community, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Harvey?
I have a question. I have a question.
Yes.
The plan is, number three on the plan, it says "existing baseline traffic conditions." And Navarro and Rio Grande are getting medians. How will that affect the master plan?
So, when we're talking about existing baseline conditions, they are going to look at what it looks like now, but they'll take the last, you know, five years' worth of data and traffic counts and what we, the input we also received on the MTP, and that will really inform the baseline. We also have a traffic demand model that they will be using as well.
My only concern is with the median, the traffic patterns will change. I mean, there are certain neighborhoods that will no longer be able to turn off of Navarro. They have to, they will have to go down, turn around, go different exits and entrances. And my concern is, if you're going to develop a plan, shouldn't you really know what the traffic conditions are once the medians are put in?
So, the median, those cuts have already been set, so the traffic demand model will help determine the modeling for when access will be now be available after the median. It's also a citywide plan, and so, you know, there's always going to be certain roads that'll be under construction or conditions changing based off a lot of factors, such as, you know, driveways and development. A large development could also come into on a certain roadway and affect the traffic on any given roadway. And so, we're looking at a little bit larger scope than maybe like an actual traffic study of a specific corridor.
But if I may, we are going to create some tools, both the traffic demand model and some operational analysis tools, to help us understand the dynamic interchanges or interactions between the roadway system as it is and how it's envisioned to be in the future, so we can take any changes that are already programmed or anything that's already in the works into consideration as we look to optimize how all of those different pieces fit together.
How often are the traffic studies, like, after the median is put in, will it be traffic studies? How soon will a traffic study be done on Navarro, for example?
It's based off a need. I know that we will be doing, our textile will be doing, a signalization study once the median is in, and studies specifically just the signals and the signal timing along Navarro. And then, that would, it would really, any other studies would be up to, you know, council or potentially NPO if there's identified a need after that.
Well, is this done just based on the ground observation, or is there some, I don't know if it's mathematical techniques or formulations that can be done if you already know how many cars are going in and out of that neighborhood, and then you know where the curb cuts are going to be? Curb cut's not the right word.
The traffic demand modeling.
They don't have to just only look at the traffic pattern and how it changed. They can predict it and evaluate it, which is part of the whole point of this.
Are there questions? Hearing none, thank you very much.
I move we approve item C1.
A second.
An emotion and a second to approve item E1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Mayor, item E2 is a resolution selecting and approving Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated as the most qualified respondent and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the Storm Drainage Master Plan update to Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated of Cypress, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $200,000 and declaring an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, going to go over the update to the Master Drainage Plan. We went back in April. We sent out requests for qualifications. We received seven respondents. Three of those, we interviewed. Civil Tech was one of them, and upon our review of each of the respondents and their qualifications, we selected Civil Tech to begin negotiations. And in those negotiations, we came up with a proposal with them, and that's what I want to go over, is the proposal tonight for the update. Kind of a history of our drainage master plans. Back in 1982, urban engineering provided the city with the first master plan, very extensive citywide. Since then, in '98, we developed another master drainage plan. Between '82 and '98, we had a lot of growth in the city, and it was time to update, a lot of changes to the requirements. Detention came into effect. In that master drainage plan, we developed a criteria manual. We proposed improvements to reduce flooding complaints, and during, after that plan, we came up with a lot of projects that were actually built. West Outfall Phase One and Phase Two. Lone Tree Detention Basins were part of that master plan. The Lone Tree Creek Improvements, along with the hike and bike trail, were part of that plan, and then the North Crest Drainage Improvements. The update, it's Civil Tech Engineering out of Cypress, Texas, and they're teamed up with Urban Engineering. Timeframe, five to six months. Project cost is $200,000, and we developed five priorities. And I'll go through those real quick. Priority one is independent study area, and what we're looking at is up to 30 undeveloped tracks, and we're going to utilize the 2020 Victoria Land Use Study done by Verdonity. Identify future land use floodplain limitations and infrastructure when they look at those tracks. Evaluate the site, determine drainage issues, and then prepare preliminary design concept and cost. And each one of those tracks will have a two-to-three-page worksheet and exhibit for, as we get developers or potential people coming in looking at these tracks, we can hand them that, and that'll help them when they're looking at those tracks when it regards to drainage issues, if there are any. Priority two, we wanted to update the Drainage Criteria Manual, review our current policy calculations as it compares to other cities, look at new detention rates and design procedures based on the sizes of development. And then, we wanted to look at, now there's a new precipitation model called NOAA Atlas 14, and it was done in 2018, and that increased the precipitation rates across the country. We want to use those rates to get that into the Drainage Criteria Manual, so it's the most current data available, and then have a memorandum discussing the effects on Atlas 14, on how it's going to affect our drainage in the streets and in the floodplains.
So, NOAA is not aware that there's a dome over Victoria, and whenever there's a rainstorm coming, it goes around us while we're here.
It seems like it. The river is very well evident showing that. Every year around this time, I sweat a little bit for rain. Let's see, I went to priority five. Okay, priority three is the storm sewer evaluation. That one is a topic, we want to evaluate the storm sewer system using Arc Hydro GIS modeling with LiDAR data. And it's, I'm going to have our consultant explain that, possibly if you want to, a little more in depth. It's to compute the flow paths and ponding depths on a GIS shape file, then perform some storm sewer level of service existing system and recommend new guidelines for improvements. Hydraulic calculations to analyze full flow, if they were clean, and then partially block pipes and show in a graphical format. And what I want to show here is what the effects of the storm sewer system is if you have a pipe that's free-flowing, then if it's a quarter-blocked, half-blocked, or even three-quarters, how that's going to affect, how that affects Victoria Texans and the citizens. And that way, we can get that data to move forward with budgeting storm sewer cleaning as we move forward into the future years. Prepare cost estimates for televising and cleaning, and then cost estimates to replace culverts under 18-inch, which is standard, normal size that is industry standard. We do have a lot of smaller culverts in town. Went too fast. Priority four is identify, is the roadside open ditch evaluation. Identify the miles of open ditches in residential and collector areas. Conduct limited field investigation to document examples of silt and its effects. Perform hydraulic calculations and analyze, you know, full-flow, partially-silted ditches, same type analysis as we're doing with the storm sewer. And then, cost estimates for ditch cleaning, including driveway and culvert replacement. And then cost estimates for ditch cleaning, including driveway and culvert replacement. And then cost estimates for concrete lining or other concepts utilizing that GIS shapefile from the very beginning of the, the proposal. And the last priority is identify miles of primary open ditch channels. Grass lined or concrete lined. We want to conduct field investigations to identify the condition as silt or potential concrete lining that failures using drone technology. We'll also use our experience and knowledge of ditches, concrete line ditches that have undermining effects. Evaluate the reaches where improvements could be reduced floodplain widths. And then again, cost estimates for channel cleaning or reshaping or replacement. And with that, I want to introduce Michael Spinks, President of Civil Tech, and his cohort, Ray Bridges with Urban Engineering. And they can answer any of the real technical questions if you have any, or if you have any of me, we're available.
Let me just say good evening. Melvin Spinks of Civil Tech Engineering, mayor, council members. It's good to be with you tonight. We look forward to providing these engineering services. I know Ken has a lot of technical terms up there and certainly can answer any of those questions if you have any.
Just because this slide is still here and I think I'm evaluating or figuring out. But what is evaluate channel reaches? I was going to ask you what a channel reach is, but I don't think that that is. I think that's not a, not a noun. Maybe it's a verb or an adjective. But what does that mean?
Yes, ma'am. So yes, like Lone Tree Creek is one of your creeks in the city of Victoria. And so Lone Tree Creek has a certain distance associated with it. Miles, maybe 10 miles, five miles. And so a channel reaches are dividing the channel total length into segments. So that way we can identify segments of the channel and how they're performing.
I'm just curious, when in, in this particular priority five plus the others, when we talk about maintenance and cleaning, what the effect of cleaning, certain pipes are and cleaning channels and cleaning ditches. It's one thing to get a first time estimate on it, but will this study also include sort of a free and a recommended frequency that this needs to be done? And the reason I say that is because I think it's evident that we haven't been doing a lot of maintenance on some of these structures in the past. And I think we need to know those frequencies so that in the planning of future budgets and things, we can plan on having the money available to constantly keep these structures clean and functioning properly so that they don't fall back into a, into a state of disrepair.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, mayor. You know, we can provide recommendations of what's used in other communities as far as the standard of practice in mowing channels, desilting channels. So we can provide what's commonly done in Texas.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Gill, who's responsible now for mowing of the ditches?
Right now, Public Works is, and we contract that out through Yellowstone. And there is, they're, they're, they're here this month hitting the ditches right now.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Move we adopt item E2?
A motion in a second to adopt item E2. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Same sign.
Mayor, item E3 is a resolution authorizing engineering service provider selection for the Community Development Block Grant mitigation programs through the Texas General Land Office.
Evening, mayor and council. As we move forward with getting together what we need to do for our grant proposal for the CDBG MIT grant, we need to select an engineer because the selection has to be included in the application before we even know that we've gotten the grant. And so we put together an RFP and we ranked the submissions and we came up with Dussetton Associates as identified by the committee. And so we would like to designate Dussetton Associates as our engineer for this project.
Move we adopt item E3?
A second.
And a motion in a second to adopt item E3. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Same sign.
Thank you.
Mayor, item E4 is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2020-2021 Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation budget.
Garza.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to take a few minutes and just run through the proposed budget for fiscal year 21. This budget has already been approved by the Sales Tax Development Corporation. And as a reminder, that's a budget that needs to be approved by both entities. Being VSTDC and then supported by council. Of course, if any changes come tonight, it would have to go back and, and be approved by, by VSTDC. They originally, this isn't on the slide, but VSTDC originally approved this budget on their end a couple of months ago. The reason why it took a couple of months to come before you was because we were allocating some time to allow the, them to negotiate an updated contract with VDC. That unfortunately has not taken place, but we obviously need to proceed with adopting the budget. And so the amount that is in this budget for the VDC contract is the exact same amount that was last year. VDC did submit a request to increase that amount. But VSTDC did not feel comfortable approving the new amount until they had some time to actually work closely with VDC on a, on an updated contract. And so when that time comes, if it does warrant a budget amendment to increase that amount, we'll just bring that back to VSTDC and to council. But I did want to throw that out there. This is a very similar presentation that, that we went through with VSTDC. And so I'm not going to spend too, too much time on this, other than simply convey what our fund balance is going into fiscal year 21. This slide is just representative of what we're projected to be. It might kind of throw you off a little bit because obviously for many months, we've been talking about a decrease in sales tax revenue because of the COVID pandemic. But we wanted to make sure that we included explanations as to why those projected actuals, especially on the revenue side, appear to be a little higher than the previous year. And as you can tell by the explanation at the bottom of the slide, a lot of it has to do simply by the de-allocation of projects. But you could see in red why the part that's associated with sales tax revenue. So again, I want to hit on, on mainly the fund balance. Where, excuse me, where we project to be at the end of this fiscal year with our fund balance for Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation is actually close to $10.6 million. A lot of this had to do with a lot of projects that we pushed. You may recall a conversation with council in May about trying to be strategic with the timing of projects to help with cash flow. And so you may recall conversations about some projects that on the calendar year, we simply moved a couple of months. But for us, on the fiscal year front, we were able to push out. And so you'll notice some list of projects here that we on paper pushed out to fiscal year 21, which is what creates this ballooning effect of fund balance for the VDC. And that was an intentional on our part, again, to help with cash flow and to help VSTDC have a conversation about the plan of work and to really provide an opportunity for everybody to have a discussion about how to expend the funds.
Mr. Garza, so this is the 2020 budget for the Sales Tax Development Board. Is that a calendar year or is that?
It's fiscal year.
Because you're pushing things into 21, which for our budget, we're already in 21 for the city's budget.
No, our fiscal year 21 starts in October.
Okay, all right.
Yes. We already have approved our budget for, for fiscal year 21.
So when these things are being pushed into 21, is that being pushed into the budget starting in October?
Yes.
And so this is the budget before October?
Correct. And so if I go to the next slide, you'll see now we've taken that $10.6 million, which would be at the end of fiscal year 20, and we add the revenues estimated for fiscal year 21, which is 7.8, for a total of 18.4 before we allocate anything. Kind of big picture, right? And then we obviously have expenditures that would come from the 18.4. And so at the very end, you'll see what that would look like. So no secret, there's been a lot of conversations with Sales Tax Development Corporation about their efforts to reassess and to view their role from a much broader picture as it relates to economic development. We all are, we are all familiar with the history of the Sales Tax Development Corporation, familiar with the promise to the voters, familiar with just a lot of how the VSTDC has expended its funds over time. There is a couple of new elements associated in fiscal year 21 that I want to hit. One of those is coordination services. One of the elements that VSTDC, VSTDC's plan of work identifies as a need is the need to have somebody to really coordinate all of the efforts of all of the economic development players. So that being workforce development, that being retail, that being primary jobs with VDC, that being airport, that being downtown, you know, all the different elements that tie into economic development. VSTDC finds value in having these types of services. Now, obviously because of the promise to the voters, VSTDC cannot directly hire staff. This is why historically VSTDC has outsourced to VDC to assist with primary jobs. VSTDC has outsourced to the city in the past to assist with, with other, with other projects. And so this is simply another, another service that VSTDC is looking to outsource. You may recall that when the city presented the budget going into fiscal year 21, on our end, we included an economic development director. And so the intention is for VSTDC to contract with the city for these coordination services. The contract management and city administration services piece, that piece, the majority of that has actually been in there for many years. And I don't remember exactly when that started, but VSTDC contracts with the city to assist with legal services, treasury services, to assist with project management oversight of all the infrastructure projects that VSTDC funds. That amount historically has totaled $300,000, has increased by $13,854 because one of the services that is in the plan of work for VSTDC to assist with or to outsource is for grant services. And so the position that we created at the city with Katie for grants administration services, she's, she's also going to be hired to assist VSTDC with grant related projects for economic development. And so that's, that's, that's that amount. One of the other new things that, that was included in VSTDC's proposed budget to help create some capacity in the general fund on the city's behalf was moving the allocation to the transit program from city general fund to VSTDC. And so that's included in the VSTDC budget. You may also recall that there was a verbal commitment on VSTDC's front to assist with a splash pad project dating back to the conversation on, on the business program. The business assistance program that we were having conversations about. Of course, now we know that that can be reimbursed through CARES, but at the time we did not know that. But since then, nothing has changed in terms of the commitments of VSTDC to assist with parks projects. They've done it in the past. And so there's money in there to assist with the splash pad project at Riverside. There's also some ongoing maintenance expenditures in the VSTDC budget. And so some of those are associated with maintenance of the Lone Tree Business Park, as well as some right away mowing on Loop 463. That has also been in there for several years. And so that's in there again. That part of it is not, is not new. This categorization is new, but the expenditure type, expenditure type isn't. And so one of the things that has come up in conversations with VSTDC is about being more intentional with infrastructure projects that are associated in economic development. We all know that we utilize VSTDC to assist with major capital improvements with some of our streets within the city. Obviously not residential streets. But there was a desire to be more intentional with how we utilize those infrastructure funds. And so even though this is called incentive programs, we probably could have called it something different. But what, what that $2.5 million is, is intended to represent is funds used on infrastructure to assist with economic development. So for example, the agreement that the city entered into with the Texan last year to assist with the oversize of the utilities on the opposite side of future I-69, that allocation towards that reimbursement is coming from this 2.5. The amount that would also be part of the Dr. Verma project at the Medical Plaza close to the Loop and North, and North Main, that portion of it is also included in this 2.5. And other projects that we've discussed in executive session that necessitate infrastructure, infrastructure investment in would also come from this 2.5. And so I think it's important that we're, we all are understanding what this 2.5 is. This 2.5 isn't, you know, incentive money that we're just going to throw around and, you know, to incentivize people. It's actually investment in infrastructure, but tied to an economic development agreement like the ones that I just referenced. I mentioned earlier that we're, the amount for the VDC is staying the same amount as last year, which is a $394. VSTDC also helps support the retail coach, which is $30,000. We also contracted out some sales tech analysis that's in there. And one of the, the big new things under this, this expenditure is a strategic plan. Our community has not gone through an economic development strategic plan in 20 years. 20 years ago, it was spearheaded by VDC. And so this time, VSTDC's desire is for VSTDC to spearhead the process. And so we're allocating the funds for that. In terms of the actual implementation or the actual rollout of the, of the plan will look very similar to what it did 20 years ago. Some of you might have been involved with it. You know, there's a large steering committee that, that gets together representative of different industries, the universities, you know, et cetera. That's part of the coordination services that we, I alluded to earlier. Somebody needs to coordinate all this. And since, since VDC doesn't have staff to do it, they're outsourcing, outsourcing those coordination services to the city. One of the elements that has come up in conversations even just between the city, VDC, and other, other members involved in economic development conversations is that there isn't a, a, a specific amount of money allocated to explore the feasibility for any site. And so oftentimes we do have site selector companies or even businesses directly that reach out, you know, asking for more information on a site. Sometimes it's drainage related, right? And so the drainage study will tackle, you know, some of the drainage issues. But there are other issues that sometimes we need to be more proactive about. Environmental studies is an example. Companies might reach out also seeking information on traffic analysis or, or just anything else that might be included in some type of visibility study for a site. Historically, VDC has not had the resources to do that. And they've been dependent on, you know, coming to VSTDC seeking that. And so rather than taking a reactive approach to it and just having a conversation from let's just take it from fund balance or whatever, let's just, that we, we, we thought it'd be better to just proactively say, you know what? This does matter to us. And so let's just allocate an amount of money. And so in the future, when VDC or somebody else is interested in exploring the visibility of a site, we've all, we've already agreed that there's money that's allocated to that. And there's no need to sort of have this fight going on between, you know, de-allocating from another source or things of that sort. And so we feel that it'll make things a little, hopefully a little, little smoother on that front. Of course, infrastructure is a big part of it with VSTDC funds. And so that, that's no different in the, in the 21 budget. And so some of you are familiar with the ASR project. And so that phase three construction project is included in fiscal year 21. Crestwood Phase Three is included in fiscal year 21. One of the new elements that, that VSTDC is, is wanting to be more involved with is also downtown. And so VSTDC cannot fund sort of staff, right? And so what VSTDC is, is, is wanting to help fund for downtown is a, a maintenance program. Currently, we don't really have a structure in place of, of some, of ownership behind who cleans some of these elements downtown. Sometimes you might drive down and see a bunch of leaves. Nobody's there to pick them up. If you walk downtown, you might see in the gutters that there's a lot of leaves. There's nobody assigned to pick them up. You might see the trees, you know, going crazy. You might see lights out. There's nobody really responsible for the maintenance of downtown, other than the plaza itself, which is the Parks Department. But obviously downtown is much bigger than just the DeLion Plaza. And so we want to be more intentional with proactively maintaining downtown. And VSTDC wants to take that on and assist paying for that. VSTDC also wants to help seed a, a newer version of a facade grant program. Historically, the city did have more of a historic preservation grant program. But this facade grant program, even though it has a facade word in it, we're not totally sold on that, on what that's going to be called. because we really want to create a program that's going to help fund not just facade improvements, but any, any potential development cost that's associated with somebody rehabbing a building. These types of grant programs are not uncommon in downtowns. We had one in Kingsville, for example, and they're typically reimbursable grants, right? And so obviously the owner or the person that's rehabbing a building would have to expend that amount. And fifty thousand dollars probably isn't going to go a long way, but we want to at least start somewhere and see if it works, right? Almost kind of have like a pilot program. Because we recognize that oftentimes there's a big economic factor that would encourage somebody to build out by the loop versus downtown, right? And so we want to try and do what we can to close that gap a little bit. And so hopefully this program is a step in that direction. One of the things that we also want to assist with is, is just the role of the board itself, right? Literally a little over a year ago, I talked about the need to empower VSTDC board a little more. And so even simple things like training, right? We haven't historically had an amount allocated towards board training, but we want to invite the VSTDC board members to go to training. And again, rather than simply taking that amount from fund balance, we're saying, that's important to us, let's just allocate that amount now. And almost kind of treat VSTDC like a department, right? I mean, a department typically proactively is allocated funds for maintenance, allocated funds for training and travel, allocated funds for capital expenditures. And so we want to kind of try and treat that because our goal is for VSTDC to be a professional entity, more so than what it has been. And so we want to make sure that it has the resources behind it to assist with, with that. And so all in all, when you add it all together, we're proposing ten point two million dollars in expenditures. You may recall earlier, there was a slide that showed that we had over eighteen million. Once we added all that back up, and so you'll see where we will end up after we spend all that money in fiscal year twenty one, after the new money comes in in fiscal year twenty one, we'll end up with eight point one million dollars at the end of fiscal year twenty one. So there's still plenty of fund balance in the VSTDC budget to continue to have conversations about infrastructure projects, continue to have conversations about economic development. This would look a lot different had we not sort of played that game of, of delaying projects a little bit from one fiscal year to the next, because it would have eaten up the fund balance. And so we want to make sure that we always maintain a healthy fund balance and we don't let that fund balance get in the way of us having conversations about assisting new economic development projects. And so that was a very intentional effort on everybody's part. We never want to be in a position where somebody comes to us and says, hey, I want assistance for this. And our answer is, we don't have money, right? We want to be in a position where we have a healthy fund balance so that we can always have that as an option. And so we feel that the, the, the strategy that we, that we approached or that we took allows us to invest more in economic development with VSTDC while at the same time maintaining a healthy fund balance, which as you'll hear later, here later from Gilbert, is important and is a big deal to do, so.
Mr. Garza on this?
Yes, sir.
This only works for this year, right? That fund balance starts getting dwindled down next year.
Right.
So there's going to have to be budget cuts in Sales Tax Development Corporation board next year.
There's a lot of things that are going to have to be revisited next year, right? So for example, some of the elements that VSTDC is, is funding in fiscal year twenty one, we'll have to revisit next year. So for example, the Main Street related items, we'll have to revisit next year. The transit part, we'll have to revisit next year. Obviously, our hope is that on the general fund side, you know, revenues come in and, and we can kind of go back to the way things are quote unquote supposed to be, right? Like typically Main Street programs are funded through hotel occupancy tax dollars, but obviously that's taken a little hit. So we're saying, you know, let's for fiscal year twenty one, have VSTDC assist with that. Rather than letting the, the pandemic, as the mayor spoke about in his state of the city, rather than letting it hold us back from accomplishing what we want to do, we got real creative in fiscal year twenty one. And so we knew that we wanted to be very proactive with downtown, and so we found a way to do it. For instance, community appearance is another example. You may recall that when we went through the normal city budget, community appearance, we shifted over to environmental services, Dero's Enterprise Fund budget, even though in the past it was general fund. And so we've gotten real creative to continue moving forward with our goals. But you're right, we're going to have to revisit, you know, that next year.
I think what doesn't change is the structure, the restructuring of it, the plan of work. It may be funded differently or not funded nearly the same, but I like the direction of having an intentional type of prioritization of different elements of economic development. And then you have, you can put your monies into those different categories as is appropriate at the time that you consider those budgets.
Right, we do think that the categorical approach to budgeting, we think is going to help VSTDC and us be more proactive with what we want VSTDC to focus on. These are the categories that I'm referring to that are up on the screen. So historically speaking, it's, it's been a very project based budgeting approach. And obviously from a legal standpoint, yes, projects need to be adopted and things of that sort. But even though projects need to be adopted, doesn't mean that we have to budget them that way. And so we want to take this categorical approach so that every year we're having a conversation about parks projects. Every year we're having a conversation about research and marketing. And we can really truly start to see kind of the big picture behind the role that VSTDC plays. For example, a big part of what VEDC does is research and marketing, right? And so they're under that category. And so that doesn't interfere with any of the other categories, right? Because we recognize going into it that VEDC assists with research and marketing as it relates to primary jobs. And so it doesn't interfere with the administration services item, it doesn't interfere with downtown, it doesn't interfere with anything else. And so it's not perfect, but we do think and VSTDC agrees that this is a step in the right direction, simply to take a more proactive approach to budgeting with, with, with those funds.
Two things.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garza, I think Councilman Bachnight spoke to it before in regards to the splash pad. Is that just a placeholder right now until the master plan is developed?
Great thought, yes. So our thought is that we get far enough in the Parks Master Plan, which by the way, we, the Parks Master Plan will come to council at the next meeting in October, so that hopefully we can kick it off, you know, fairly soon. I don't believe that the Parks Master Plan would have to be come a hundred percent complete for us to really get a good understanding of what the conceptual plan for Riverside Park would look like. We can get more into it at the next meeting, but in essence, the Parks Master Plan will, will have two big elements or three big elements to it, right? One focused on trails, one focused on the overall parks network, and then one focused on specific conceptual plans for a few parks, Riverside being one of them, Ethelie Tracy Park being another. And so that specific conceptual plan for Riverside is what's really going to tell us, where is the ideal location within Riverside and how it relates to other, other elements within it. And then the bigger part of it might even lead us to conversations about, well, is Riverside the right? Where within Riverside does it make sense compared to everything else?
I think the question is, do you need a splash pad?
That's where I was going. Historically speaking, up here, splash pads have been met with.
With splash?
Well, it's not as splashy as you think. There is a lot of dialogue in the community in regards to things for older children to do.
Yeah.
And how that that is a void and are we missing an opportunity by putting another splash pad? And we may not be, it may be the right thing to do. I just don't want to put something in concrete and then all of a sudden not.
Yeah, that's fair.
Miss an opportunity to enhance our community.
Yeah, no valid point, you know, and even though we're budgeting it at that, of course, doesn't mean that later we can't, you know, change our mind. We, you know, it happens in other scenarios too, where we budget for a specific item, things come up, it changes. The one thing that I will point out is that part of the funds that we have are from a private foundation that are earmarked for a splash pad at Riverside Park. And so just keep that in mind.
Could we also go to that foundation and if there's another idea, ask them?
Sure, well, I mean, we can absolutely. And it would help to have a Parks Master Plan, obviously, to, to, to walk in for that meeting, right? So that we have a, a lot of information. We certainly don't lose anything by asking.
True.
But we can cross that bridge when we get to it, you know, once we get through the plan and.
And I ask some of these questions because if this goes out to the community, they're going to say, oh, we're hanging in a splash pad in twenty twenty one. And the amount of public comments will, could be large.
That's fair.
The other issue I, I wanted to bring up is this economic coordination developer.
The coordination services?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Was, was that part of the role of the second city manager that we hired?
The assistant city manager?
Yes.
So yes, slightly, yes. And so the idea at the time was for VSTDC to assist to pay for that role to help do exactly that. At the time, the level of coordinating was strictly, you may recall, retail and enhancing the retail coordination with VSTDC and VEDC. And so based on the conversations that, you know, Mike has had with you in executive session, I think we've accomplished that, where there is more, more involvement on, 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 on that front. But as the plan of work for VSTDC has expanded, there's just not enough time there for him to focus on that. You know, now VSTDC wants to be more involved with, obviously, an economic development strategic plan, right? You know, Mike doesn't have time to be involved with that. If we think about the master plans that we're embarking on now, they're all under Mike, right? Drainage Master Plan is Ken, but Ken reports to Mike. Parks Master Plan is Jason, Jason reports to Mike. Thirfer Master Plan is Julie, Julie reports to Mike. And so Mike's already got plenty on his plate as it relates to that. And so these coordination services that are for next year are intended to be much more than what has been so far.
Are you looking at a, a full, not, not full time, but are you looking at a permanent position or a temporary position during this period while the master plan is strategic plan is going on?
Well, as of now, we're approaching it as, as, as a full time position on the city's front. Obviously, every, any position with the city is subject to funding and subject to, you know, conversations. But we definitely are not approaching it from a recruitment standpoint or anything like that, selling it as a temp position. That's not how we're envisioning selling it.
And that's, yeah, it wasn't necessarily the full time. That was my question was more, is it temporary or is it a new, new spot, new spot from now on?
Yeah, well, I think we're approaching it as it being a new position. Obviously, again, funding might impact that, right? And so I'll give you an example, you know, and, and I'm not trying to pick on, on, it's a bad choice of words. But if we use VDC as an, VEDC as an example, right? VSTDC financially supports VEDC. If VSTDC were to, you know, cut the funding to VEDC, it might impact VEDC's ability to maintain four people on staff, right? Because VEDC is highly dependent on the VSTDC contribution to maintain four people on staff. Well, it'd be no different here where VSTDC outsources coordination services to the city, excuse me, to the city for a position that we're hiring. And if at some point that funding for those coordination services drops or gets cut, well, then that would put the city in a similar position that VSTDC would be in, which is reevaluating that position. So it is very heavily dependent on the outsourcing of those services by VSTDC, similar to the setup with BDC. I don't know, that make it more confusing?
A, a little bit, I mean, to some extent, some of this seems like it is just transferring from one location or one department to another. And so, you know, I'm not sure what the personnel needs have been and if there's been a, a lack.
Yeah, well, I think one thing that might help is, is, you know, VSTDC is a freestanding entity, right, legally, right? Obviously so is the city, right? And so VSTDC has to contract the city for services. And so that's what it's done already for many years for some of the other administration services like Gilbert's, Thomas's, the three hundred thousand dollars that VSTDC pays the city to help with the project management of all the capital projects. That's a contractual relationship between VSTDC and the city. And so that's no different than the contractual obligation that VSTDC has with BDC for services and that would have with the city for the coordination services.
I guess I'm just, I hadn't really thought about it until Mr. Young brought it up, Dr. Young brought it up. But, and we do have an awful lot going on right now.
Right.
But will we have this much going on two years from now?
Well, I hope, you know, I mean, I hope we have.
It'll all be new and different.
You know, I mean, the reality is that the implementation part of any master plan is the hardest part, right? And so I would argue that one of the reasons why the initial economic development strategic plan that was in in two thousand didn't necessarily continue its implementation to the full degree that it needed to was because there weren't resources allocated towards it. And so the reality is that that's going to apply here too, right? We don't, we want to learn from that experience. And that's actually one of the reasons why VSTDC is spearheading the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Because even in my conversations with Dale, you know, with VEDC spearheading it the first time, they were put in a spot where as the organizers, they were the ones that would have to have had held everybody else accountable for their piece. And was that really VEDC's role, right? To hold the university or Victoria College or the Chamber or SBDC or somebody else accountable for their portion of it? And so we think that VSTDC through contracting the city would potentially be better positioned to actually implement the strategic plan and hold all the different parties accountable for their peace.
Well, the way I look at it, that this is what VSTDC has presented as, as an entity, has decided is, is their budget. Obviously, there's a component to it that coordinator isn't going to be hired unless the city hires it. So, you know, we can always further discuss that. But I would also say that, that honestly, if we don't get serious about economic development and do everything we can to improve our city and promote economic development, there are no, that's the only really source of income that we could increase. We've got to expand our tax base. We cannot continue on with tax bases that have a net of one, one percent growth a year. It is not sufficient to cover the things that we have to simply maintain, much less build in terms of infrastructure. And the multifaceted attack finally realizing that economic development isn't singular in nature, it involves a lot of different things. If we don't attack it all and improve all of these elements of our city, we're not going to have increased sales tax because we're not going to have entities come in here to sell things. So I think it's, it's vitally important that we, we take the steps necessary to put ourselves in a stronger position, even in times that we're in now, so that we're prepared to move forward and attract business and, and at retail industry, everything to Victoria, Texas. And part of that's just getting out and rolling up your sleeves and getting serious about it. So I applaud the efforts of the Sales Tax Development Corporation. They put in a lot of work developing this, their plan of action and things. And I mean, we're, we're at a point where we've, we've got to really, really get serious about economic development. That's the way I see it.
And, and one of the things that might help, and so later this month when we meet for our one on one, I'll work on preparing sort of a list of all the different elements that this position would be involved with. Because this coordination services is just one element of it. There are many other things that, that would fall under the responsibility of, of this individual. You know, as an example, we've talked recently about reactivating the Housing Finance Corporation, the Hospital Facilities Corporation, right? There has to be some staffer responsible for manning those boards, right? I mean, up to this point, it's been like a committee of April, Thomas, but you know, it's not really their environment to be involved with those groups. And so there are other things that are going to come out of the downtown master plan, come out of the Economic Development Strategic Plan that's going to necessitate more of a subject matter expert on our end. For instance, a tax increment reinvestment zone, a TURS. We already know going into the downtown master plan that it's probably going to recommend doing that. We're going to need somebody spearheading that. We know that we want to revisit conversations about our incentive guidelines. You know, we've had conversations about, you know, kind of relooking at those. We need somebody to, that has the time to do that, right? We know that we can change even just our online presence on our website to have like a landing page for economic development. You know, even right now, we don't even really have that, right? It's important that we have a point of contact for economic development. of contact for economic development representing the city's objectives and our goals. And so, I'm happy to, I am working with HR to kind of finalize what a job description would look like. But more to that, I can be prepared to go through more specifics on what I envision that, those responsibilities being. And that might help, you know, clarify the whether it's temporary or long-term issue.
Thank you for expanding on your vision because that helped what you just said.
This is a proactive budget. And the Sales Tax Corporation never really had a proactive budget before. Economic development had to fall in the lap of Victoria before. And I think this is a great step forward. You have a lot of people on the Sales Tax Corporation who are behind this that want economic development and want to go out and get it and not wait for it to fall into Victoria's lap. And the only way, we have to compete with other towns in Texas and other towns throughout the United States. And if we're not proactive, we're not going to get the economic development that we need to grow. And this is a proactive budget. I think it's a great budget.
You take an analogy of even in my business, in a business like mine, you grow to a level where you reach a certain level of projects that you can go at and compete for successfully. And then I get to a point where my competition is up here, they have full marketing departments. So, for me, I reach a point, at some point where I've got to ask myself, if I want to go to the next step, am I going to have to hire a marketing director to go out? Because the only way I can be competitive in preparing RFQs and proposals and all of that, when you're running your own business, you don't have time to do all that stuff. And so, you have to hire somebody to do it. And if you don't do that, you can't compete up here because they have entire departments. That's all they do. And that is, as Councilman Lofkin alluded to, we're in competition with many communities across the state of Texas. And if we're going to succeed, we have to be competitive. So, I think, you know, we're just taking a step. But as it knows, we don't know what will happen a year from now. But we can't adopt the position of just sitting and waiting, in my opinion. We must move forward and try to get ourselves in a position when things do start opening up that we're ready to get in there and seriously compete.
While I applaud all the things that we're talking about and Mr. Garza bringing this all to our attention, I cannot just sit here. My feathers are ruffled. Just because some of you have not been involved in economic development in the past 20 years does not mean that we have been sitting here waiting for things to fall in our lap. There have been a lot of our community, a lot of our citizens, as well as some of our employees that have spent a lot of time, have made a lot of personal sacrifice. And I cannot sit here and listen to you both sound as though this is a brand-new thing that we're starting now. I think it's fantastic that we're expanding on it. But in reference and reverence to all those that have done a lot in the past, I just can't sit here and say, oh, no, this is a great idea. We're starting this today. Thank you, Mr. Garza, for moving us ahead. You're exactly right. We do need to move ourselves up to the next level. But I don't want anyone to think that we've been sitting here waiting.
Yeah, I agree with that, right? And shout out to John Kaminsky, right? I mean, he historically has been involved with a lot of projects that have benefited our community. And so, there's definitely a lot of work that has gone on. But, you know, we're trying to continue that investment and expand it.
I move, we adopt E4.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt item E4. Any further discussion? If you none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side.
Mayor, item E5 is a resolution approving an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation for the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation. Mayor and council, as you all are already aware, we are in the middle of a process to update the Victoria Housing Finance Corporation, particularly tonight. I'm addressing the corporate records in order to bring that organization up to date and make it a viable entity to help with the funding of low-income and moderate-income housing in our community as those projects become available. We are following a four-step process. As you know, the first step was to appoint new directors to that board. Second was to elect the officers of that corporation. We have finished those first two steps. And we are now here tonight talking about the third step, which is the amendment and modernization of the Articles of Incorporation for that entity. Now, the process of amending Articles of Incorporation for a housing finance corporation is set out in state law, and it is more complicated, of course, than it would be for a private nonprofit corporation. I have on the screen one section of code. It's the only section of code I'll talk about tonight. It is Texas Local Government Code Section 394.016B. And I'll highlight a couple of phrases in the first bullet point there. The Board of Directors of a Housing Finance Corporation may file a written application to request the local government to give permission for them to amend their Articles of Incorporation. That's a step that has to be done before they can vote themselves to amend the Articles of Incorporation. After you have considered their application, which by the way, is attached in the packet as a letter from President Rafael de la Garza III of that corporation, it is requesting permission to amend those Articles of Incorporation. You have to pass a resolution finding that that amendment is wise, expedient, necessary, or advisable before the board can vote to approve those Articles of Incorporation. And so, that is what the resolution is tonight. We have included in your packet the draft of the Articles of Incorporation that are being considered. The Victoria Housing Finance Corporation hired outside counsel to help with this process. Mark Malvo of McCall, Parker, and Horton is bond counsel for the Housing Finance Corporation on standby for the day that may come soon where the Housing Finance Corporation is asked to consider the opportunity to sell bonds to help with a project. He is also helping and has provided to us draft documents of both the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws based on modern best practices for housing finance corporations. He has several clients that are housing finance corporations around the state. Assuming that counsel adopts or approves the adoption of the amendments to the Articles of Incorporation, we will move on to step 3A, which is to go back to the Housing Finance Corporation next week at a meeting on September 22nd for the Housing Finance Corporation to approve those Articles of Incorporation and to then file them with the Secretary of State. At that same meeting, they will consider amendments to their own bylaws to bring those up to date as well, also on the 22nd. Assuming that that passes, we will be back here before counsel on October 6th for counsel to ratify the adoption of those bylaws. And at that point, if everything goes as planned, the Housing Financial Corporation will be fully reconstituted and ready for business. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
I don't have a question about the procedure, but I do have some questions about the bylaw or the amendment itself.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I don't know if I should wait until there's a motion.
I move to approve item E5.
Second. Motion is second. I'll now open it up to discussion.
Okay. Let me get back to it. My question is in Article 4, the end of the second line on the second page, I guess, where it talks about accomplishing these goals by financing the cost of residential ownership and development. And I'm very uncomfortable with that. And I'm not sure whether what we're trying to say either is facilitating third parties in their financing or whether we're trying to say financing via bonds or other non-municipal or non-city funds, or whether we're really trying to say financing the cost.
Yes, ma'am. I think that's a great question for clarification. The general public may not be as aware as we all are that the Housing Finance Corporation operates by issuing bonds that are tax-free. Those bonds are then to be repaid by the developer, not by the city and not by the Housing Finance Corporation. It does not obligate funds of the local government to pay those bonds. But the bonds are tax-free. And the lack of paying those taxes is the advantage to the developer that we're providing them. And that's why they come to us in seeking these arrangements. So, that's what we're seeking to describe with that sentence.
Okay.
Does it need to be clarified?
Could you clarify more along the lines of Ms. Scott's comments?
I guess my problem is I'm reading it as a layperson not understanding a housing finance corporation having bonding as its source of funding. And I'm just reading it as this corporation with three council members as its board will finance the cost of residential ownership.
I wonder if it would help if we added the word facilitate in that phrase to say by facilitating the financing of the cost of residential ownership?
That would help a lot.
Would you care to make that as a motion to amend?
Yes. I would move that we amend these, can I just say?
Proposed Articles of Incorporation.
Proposed Articles by adding the word facilitating the before, by financing the cost, so that it says by facilitating the financing of the cost, or whatever fits grammatically.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
We have an amendment and a second for that amendment. Is there any further discussion on that?
This doesn't change the procedures, does it? It doesn't have to come back after the?
No, sir.
Finance corporation comes and says, okay, yeah, we agree with you too. Can we make that change?
No, sir. It doesn't. In fact, at the Housing Finance Corporation next week, the corporation will consider these as a fresh document. I know that they previously voted to propose this change to the council, but we don't have to go back to step one and start over again. It's a great question.
Yeah, and I think you're right. Just adding facilitating takes care of it. It doesn't need the the after it.
We have a motion and a second to the amendment. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. So, now we go back to the amended motion.
The motion as amended.
As amended. So, on the table, any more discussion on that?
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, I will call for the vote on the amended motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side.
Mayor, item E6 is reappointing the municipal court judge.
Move we approve item E6?
I'll second.
I want to thank.
There's a motion, a second to approve item E6. Any discussion on that?
No, I want to thank Ms. Heinhold. I'm sorry, Judge Heinhold.
Thank you very much.
She does a fantastic job for the municipal court and has brought a great number of ideas and procedures to the court to make it more efficient. Glad she's going to do it again.
And she is available, as you can see. So, Judge, I don't know if you want to add anything to that or say anything?
I was just.
I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve the community. For anyone that has visited our court, you can see that I really enjoy my job and I love being able to be accessible and ensure that there's access to justice for our community and that our streets are safer and all of those wonderful things. So, thank you for considering me again for this position. And I'm certainly available if you ever have any questions or concerns or anything that I can help with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? If you none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side.
Mayor, item E7 is a resolution reconsidering abandoning a portion of Stolt Street for the purpose of reconstructing a signalized intersection at Houston Highway and Azalea Street.
Good evening, council. Again, this is Stolt Street. Hopefully, this could be the last time. But we will, I'm kind of going over the history and where we've been a little bit and then where we are right now. I'll leave it at that. Back in, Azalea and Stolt started as a issue with the traffic management team about the safety of the pedestrians. That traffic management team is, consists of city, fire department, police department, TechDOT officials, planning, engineering, and sheriff's department, transit, a lot of people. So, we came up with two workable solutions during that meeting. One to realign Stolt Street and with a 90-degree intersecting point. And then the other one was to cul-de-sac Stolt Street. During the October 15th meeting, a resolution was passed selecting the option to realign Stolt Street. During that meeting, we talked about costs of it and, you know, don't, we need to look at all the options and look at costs, look at HEB's involvement, look at the citizens' involvement that are around Stolt Street. So, we went to HEB, presented the realignment option to them and began negotiations with HEB in June. And we reviewed those results, requested, and council requested the staff to look at the cul-de-sac option because those results were not, they were expensive. And we wanted to look at the cul-de-sac option as a fair-to-fair ratio to them. Wow, that went quick again. Okay. So, we had the option to realign on one, on the left side is option one. And then option two was the cul-de-sac option. The, when we met with HEB, we went over both options very specifically, got commitments on both of them. And the land acquisition was 148,000 for the cul-de-sac. HEB agreed to just do a land swap with abandoned portion to the cul-de-sac. Cost to construct the realignment versus the cul-de-sac, the realignment was 400,000. And then the cul-de-sac is 160,000. City, the realignment option for the damages or for the assistance to HEB was 400,000 for the realignment and then 150 for the cul-de-sac. So, total cost for the realignment, we estimate at 948, 948,000. And then versus the cul-de-sac of 310,000. Remember, TechDOT is paying for the signal cost. So, that's not figured into any of these costs. And this is just a slide again showing what the realign, what the cul-de-sac option would look like and then what HEB's, their involvement in the project as far as their onsite work that they're going to have to do. And the big part of this, and we've been working with TechDOT, is the coordination that they're going to have with HEB to make sure that the timing hits just right because HEB needs to close their driveway. But we also want to make sure that that new aligned Stolt Street is opened at the same time. And moving forward, kind of the timeframe, the design of the cul-de-sac is October. We want to start that soon. TechDOT's design of the signal, they're going to wrap that up in October. They want, we want to bid the construction for the cul-de-sac in May of 2021. Let the signal construction in March of '21. We'll complete the cul-de-sac construction in November of '21. And then the signal is March of '22. And I know one thing that you'll see is, why is it so long from the bid of a signal to the construction? Is those materials that they order is anywhere from a six to nine-month delay time. It's, the poles, you would think they're in stock. They make them as you order them. And same with the signal cabinets. Those, it's just an extensive, long time to get those materials. Hopefully, one day, that will change. And with that, I will end the conversation and let you all deliberate and let Thomas interject his comments. I'm sure he may have some.
No, sir. I don't intend to have any. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gill?
Mr. Gill, I know I'm going to put you on the spot, but, you know, a lot of people complain to me about, well, a neighborhood doesn't need to have a traffic signal or a grocery store doesn't need to have a traffic signal. Of course, in this case, we've got both of them. Of course, in this case, we've got both of them. I also recognize that TechDOT is the one that's determined that this is where the traffic signal will go. But can you address that at all?
Yes. Traffic signals are based, and they can only be installed based on signal warrants. And a signal warrant is based on traffic. It's based on pedestrian crossings. It's based on accidents and the type of accidents. Are they fatal? Are they serious accidents? So they look at all of those factors together. By shifting that driveway over and knowing that a median is coming, we know that's coming soon, that potential for increased traffic is there. So that's one aspect. Of course, the pedestrian, that was the initial driving force of it, was pedestrians and the severity of those accidents at that intersecting point.
Thank you.
Good question.
Further questions for Mr. Gill? Any doubt? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Or do you have a presentation, Mr.?
I do not.
Move to adopt D seven.
A motion?
Second.
And a second to adopt item E seven. Any further discussion?
I just want to say I was a big proponent of getting Stolt Street all the way through. Now that we have all the information, I know that it still causes some issues and I hope that there's not cut-throughs through the car wash there. Hope that we, you know, are able to maintain that. But for the $600,000, I can't stay behind the extension of Stolt Street all the way through.
I agree.
Very happy with the proposal.
And I do want to thank staff for really going in and bringing us a really comprehensive analysis of the situation, which is very important to all of us.
Yeah, having complete information has made our decision much easier.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Also, thanks to HEB for their willingness to participate.
Well said.
Absolutely.
So having said that, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of item E seven say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Okay, I think we have city manager reports.
Just a brief one, Mayor. And the important stuff's towards the end anyway, you know that. But Mayor and council, thank you. Tonight, I will have Bill very brave report for you. I don't have a formal presentation, no PowerPoint, nothing like that, so that's great information. However, staff would like to inform council that we're in the process of amending our city fund balance policy in order to incorporate what I call stabilization financial fund, self-financing stabilization fund, or some people call it rainy fund. Also, there are some other minor changes to meet that I'm suggesting to do as well. And the last time we ever touched this topic was back in May of 2013. Now, normally, usually we'll submit the resolution for you and have a conversation right now talking about the policy itself. But I think it behooves us and staff that give council a little more time. It was handed out tonight to you, the updated policy. And also, council, the public would like to know too as well. The reason why the extra time, because we're talking about some crucial things that will have a long-lasting financial impact on us down the road. So I'd like to give council some more time to digest information. And not only that, if needed, I mean, I highly recommend maybe they can sit with the city manager or come talk to me and we can talk about the comments and proposed changes that we're suggesting to the policy itself. We are planning to come back on October 6th with a formal resolution in order to adopt, amend the policy. With that said, in summary, there are two major proposed changes to the policy. One, of course, is that we're amending the policy to include all city funds to have a minimum fund and working capital. For some reason, it was left off from the original. And the only thing that was in there was the general fund. I don't know if you have read through the whole policy. But the good news is we always have that policy in the budget itself. So kind of, we had it there, but we didn't have it formally presented to council and have a resolution on it. So I highly recommend we need to go back, clean it up a little bit, at least add the extra wording. So we went from a three-page policy maybe to a five-page policy. But it's a lot of wording. I think a lot of that stuff that you want to read in there are very familiar with it, you know. Real quick, a lot of your operating budgets normally have a three months. The other one, like internal service, you're looking at one or two months. So a lot of that stuff is very familiar to y'all. But what's new here is, which is last comment, I promise, is that over the past few months, you heard Mr. Garza during the budget presentation talking about possible changing or proposing a new policy where you create a self-financing or stabilization fund. What is that? It's just a rainy day account where you fund it with one-time money from your other operating funds. Now, make sure we're on the same track here. Not all operating funds are able to give money on excess. Let me give you an example. You might have restrictive funds like hotel funds. We don't want to take excess money, put it over there, or grant money, stuff like that. We're strictly talking about the major operating funds, which is a general fund, your water fund, environmental serve fund. And sometimes possible, you might have construction fund that has left over that goes back to be reused. Okay, just make sure it's clear. Now, you might ask yourself, well, aren't we doing this right now? Technically, we are doing it. We're doing it in separate, different operations. But the logic here, and we can have a lot of discussions. The purpose of this is not to drag it out tonight, is that to centralize it where we have all the funding in one place. You still categorize where the funding comes from, but we're able to, I don't want to say transparent, but these, you know, as a group where that money's at. And then during the budget process, that money will be allocated out according to the city manager suggesting or council request. So it's more of a centralized and down the road, we can get more aggressive with that too. It's just moving the process forward. So in closing, I do encourage, if you have questions, please read it, sit down with the city manager and myself, and let's go through it. If you have concerns, that's the whole key. Give us two more weeks to talk about it. So hopefully, next week, when we come here in front of you on October 6th, we can have productive conversation and not go back and forth so we can clear out some of the questions. If you don't have any other questions, just say, Mr. Bucknight.
Is 25% the right number?
You're asking me or what we can afford?
Well, not afford or anything because it took us a while to get up to the 25% as we worked our way up to it. But after going through a major hurricane and now pandemic, we still feel good that 25%. And I'm not, is that the right number? Should it be 28? Should it be 30? I mean.
Well, I don't know if you remember, but this is years ago. I think we had this conversation too about what my opinion was on 25. My opinion, I like six months a year, to be honest with you. That's frank, but we've got to be realistic too. Now, let's go back to the hurricane situation. We had 25% at the time with the hurricane. But we also are very conservative. I raise my hand, I'm guilty to it. And we're able to handle those situations in a given time because we do have above the 25%. We tried, if you read the policy, it says minimum. And they say we keep exactly 25. And when you give me minimum, I'm going to shoot above that all the time. So let me give you an example right now. I think Ms. Loffman already know about it. The current budget right now, general fund, has a pretty good size excess fund balance. But that was intentionally done, yes, you will know. But hopefully, once we get over the COVID situation, the second priority for those funds, we got a CIP coming up. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have some money to spend along with some bond capability and everything else. So it's not going to go to waste. But back to your original question, it's a minimum balance. I always like to have it higher.
I do too.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, for my person, I like to treat this as my personal budget too in a way because I do carry, you know, a year in reserve all the time. Just in case somebody fires me, I got a reserve, I can handle myself. But anyway.
His severance package. I'll just add that in my experience, 25% is common best practice. Some communities have actually gone the opposite way and have lowered their minimum fund balance. Some of that has to do with some of the requirements of the rating agencies, right? Because there's two elements that play a role in us deciding what we want that minimum fund balance to be, right? There's obviously the monetary aspect of it where we want to have a fund balance in case there's some type of major event that happens that we need to access it. But it also impacts your credit rating, right? And some of the credit agencies, they don't go all the way up to 25%. And so some communities have been able to actually lower that 25% minimum without impacting their credit rating. But it's still maybe not necessarily the smart thing to do, right? Because of the other element of the unknowns that might come.
If they live on the coast.
Well, an example of that, the reversal of that, we used to be at 15%, remember that, Mr. Bucknight? And when we went to 25, my rating really didn't change at all. So there's a lot of major factors, but Mr. Garza has a good point. But I hope I answered your question, Mr. Bucknight, about the 25.
I mean, I'd like to see it higher, but to be realistic is.
We've got to be realistic about what we can afford to as well.
You mentioned the general fund, the water, wastewater fund, the environmental fund, the construction fund. Are we required by charter, by accounting regulations, by state regulations? Are we required to maintain separate funds?
There is a, okay, good question. Now, we're going to another topic. Governor Gatsby is a governing county standing board, okay? And I don't know if you look at the policy, originally had Gatsby 34. Gatsby is a governing body for government accounting, how you structure, how you maintain, how you report and what funds money go in certain funds. To answer your question, yes, there is a governing board. Just like in the private sector, they have the governing board. Government has its governing boards, okay, in both answer of to the SEC. So, yes, ma'am. And there is a reason why there's a general fund, water, environmental, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. And there are other statutes too at the state, especially on utilities, that also ensure that you maintain that. Some cities, you know, we transfer a small amount from our enterprise funds to general fund, right? For administration services, you know, et cetera. Cities have gotten in trouble for transferring large amounts of funds and in essence, using them as part of just the regular general fund. And so there are examples out there of cities that have tried to utilize enterprise funds for general funds purposes and they've gotten in trouble.
One good example is the city of Austin. They own the electricity. And so they transfer quite a bit of large money back to the city of Austin general fund. That's what, they got their hands slapped.
They're lowering the rates?
Ma'am?
They should have been lowering the rates?
I think PUC got involved too as well.
In this write-up, you're saying that one of the things that this will help with is provide funding to support the city's pay-as-you-go philosophy.
That's the whole main purpose. And we had that policy for a long time, especially in CIP. Informally, we didn't ever had out in front like this, put a fund like that. Because as you recall, years ago, one of the biggest things we tried to do is try not to issue a lot of debt. Let's manage, accumulate the money and use that pay-as-you-go. We're doing the same philosophy. General fund has one-time money. If you go back to last year, we had about $5 million one-time money. Well, the same logic there applies. $5 million instead of going and get a $5 million note. Water fund, the same thing. So the whole idea here is maybe find one fund where all the money goes into and then as the whole same concept applies to this fund, that you try to minimize your debt issuing and try to always go pay as you go. I'm not saying debt is bad, but I think, in my opinion, it's just mine, that you should not be 100% debt either. You should minimize that debt and only use it when prudently over the years. Did I answer your question first of all?
Well, I think so, but I'm trying to reconcile that. So you're trying to move us away from bonds.
No, no, absolutely not.
Because pay as you go.
We've been doing that, Ms. Scott, just that we've been doing that in general fund, environmental fund and everything else. Except now, the concept is the same place, but I'm moving it to a central fund now. That's all I'm doing. It's the same concept.
Because as people start to talk about this, I really want to be clear on.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There are some folks that think that we should just pay off our bonds and never issue anymore. And when you've got here supporting the city's pay-as-you-go philosophy, that's what I'm seeing.
I stand corrected. If that's the point, that's not what my intent was. My intent was that, ladies and gentlemen, is that in today's world and financing, cities need to have debt in as a financial tool. There's no way you can continue moving forward where you have some type of debt capability and moving with the progress of a city, especially when you're doing economics and everything else. Debt has to be a vital tool. The question is, how do you use that debt and how do you manage that debt? Debt is good. Manage it is the whole responsibility. You've got to be good responsible on managing that debt. But the intent here is not to get away from that debt, absolutely not. As you well know and I well know, we can't accomplish everything with pay-as-you-go. There's no, I mean, I can take, I'm sorry I'm going to pick on you, but Tyler, Texas, you know, they moved away from COG completely. The theory was fabulous, but the downfall was that you cannot continue maintaining those infrastructures in the long term without having some debt capability. Because actually, they did set up a rainy fund account and they thought this is the solution for everything and we're going to use this as a pay-as-you-go. It worked, but when the asset starts coming down and replacing, you don't have that much capability to fund that because guess what? Before those assets come in, they got new services, so they start using this money for that. But the point is, debt in real life is part of government. I mean, to a point in our personal life too, house mortgages and everything else. But it's how you manage it.
And if I can add to that too, you know, it's important for us to have cash also, right? And so when situations do happen, whether it's a hurricane or whether it's a COVID, we probably all prefer to have cash available to spend that doesn't dip into the 25% reserve. And so what this allows us the ability to do is to have this rainy day fund outside of the 25% that we can tap into and have cash available. Now, can we do that now? Sure. But it takes it from the overall fund balance. It's probably all over the place because it's in different funds, so it's not centralized. And so this provides us an avenue to have cash centralized in one place that facilitates its use.
The key point here is that also is how do you manage this one-time centralized fund? If you're going to start zero it out every time, then okay, you defeated your purpose. It's that the whole purpose of this, as Mr. Garza mentioned, you got your 25%, you get your three-month reserve, but kind of create this extra cash on the side where if you need to do some, a project, something pops up that's out of the CIP, you can maybe go here and take care. It's going to take time, guaranteed, ladies and gentlemen. It's going to take time to build that number to a point. And I can get crazy with this. Down the road, you know, five years, maybe, somebody else might say, let's start seeding it with recurring funds or something like that. Then you've got a pot of money. It's like no difference, you're trying to create an investment trust account that you built up this deal and you start using it. That's the whole logic, but you have to start somewhere.
Called a balanced portfolio.
There you go, absolutely. I wish I could invest outside these laws, but.
I'll look forward to meeting with you in the next couple of weeks.
Absolutely, I'm looking forward to everybody. And I'm sorry I took more than five minutes.
It's all right.
That was not my goal. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there any further items from city manager?
No, sir.
If not, I think I have 647. We don't have a work session. Mr. Guish, could you recess us into executive session?
Yes, sir. The city council will recess now tonight on the 15th day of September at 6:48 PM for an executive session, including the topics of, first, the executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property interest due to the fact that a deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party. And second, economic session, excuse me, executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, to discuss or deliberate the offer of financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the city council seeks to have locate, stay or expand in or near the city of Victoria and with which the city of Victoria is conducting economic development negotiations. Thank you.
And I don't anticipate any action after this executive session, so we will not reconvene in open session again. We'll take a little break.
We're meeting in here? We're meeting in here?